Order uh this public hearing is five P M February twenty fifth. Twenty twenty five. So there is an open meetings act posted on the south wall over here for public. What's that? And then we follow the open. Bear with me, I'm still new and still learning, so. And then we move on to review and action of agendas, is that correct?
I so moved, we um approved the agenda.
A second. Roll call vote? A motion or a call vote, right? Roll, okay. You have to speak for water.
So you'll just ask everybody.
Okay. And I guess uh how do you vote? Is it the?
On the uh approval of the.
The approval of the agenda.
Yes.
Good. Yes. Now we move on to review and action of prior meeting minutes, correct? Like to move on to motion to approve the review and action of prior meeting minutes by vote.
For May twenty eight.
For May twenty eight.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four.
And I'll second.
And roll call vote again.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Roll call vote on our motion for review and action of prior meeting minutes, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Yes.
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 And then you state that it's time to ask if anybody has any public comments and then you go to the podium.
Alrighty, now we're on to public comments, so does anybody have anything they'd like to state for public comment? No? I would say that's a no. Okay, and then.
Then you can go ahead and delve onto the action discussion of election of officers.
Okay, and then we're gonna move on to the the new business, right, action and discussion of election of officers, okay? Let's move on to that then. Just got to move for a motion on that or?
If you're gonna keep the same slate or change it or?
I move we keep the same officers.
I would second that motion.
I was gonna ask her about that.
Yeah, well somebody else wants my seat. Do the speaking? No?
You're fine.
Okay, alright, well I guess we're gonna keep everything. And then we're gonna do a roll call vote, I guess, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And then I guess now we move on to action and discussion of the resolution, number twenty.
You're gonna probably carry them. It's not time. Yeah.
Back to the public hearing for today then, for on the city of Grant. Redevelopment plan for the two forty five Lincoln Avenue redevelopment project and related cost benefit analysis.
And you'll state your opening of the hearing at five oh five.
Okay, and we are opening the hearing for the five oh five P M mountain of the city of Grant redevelopment plan for the two forty five Lincoln Avenue redevelopment project and related cost benefit analysis. Hope that someone else is gonna speak.
You're double cursed, there are two lawyers in the room, so I'm very, very sorry.
Hi, I'm sorry.
My name's Mike Bacon, I'm an attorney from uh Gothamburg. Prepare this redevelopment plan for the redevelopment authority. Your task here is to see if the redevelopment plan is consistent with your comprehensive plan. And since this was uh you don't get the, this you don't get to figure out what exists, your thing is, is this project will be replacing the house with the new house. Does that meet your comprehensive plan? So if the zoning is appropriate, uh that's basically what you're up to. The plan itself seeks to recoup the costs incurred by the redevelopment authority in the city by selling the lot to um the southwest Nebraska uh community betterment corporation. Did I mangle that one badly? I'm very, very sorry.
We're good, yeah.
Anyway, um so they can't afford to pay thirty two thousand dollars for a lot. So what happens is hopefully be able to capture the increased real estate taxes. And that will uh will give the will give the corporation a a grant of thirty three thousand dollars to retrieve from a tax increment finance note. That note will be handed to the authority then, and as the taxes come in, they'll retrieve their uh their investment. And the redevelopment authority will be able to deed the property uh free of charge. In other words, they'll get, the redevelopment authority will get paid back through the taxes. And you'll get a brand new home that as I understand will probably cost more than ten or a thousand dollars. But we likely not be able to sell at that price, so someone's gonna uh you know come up short. And that's what TIFs, TIFs will. In addition, as I understand, the redevelopment authority uh is gonna actually put in about ten thousand dollars to help make the project financially feasible. And your recommendation, I'm gonna go to the redevelopment authority and to the city council, so you have your spits. Now if they're gonna put a hog brinnering facility in, then you might say, oh, that isn't quite as square with our uh uh conference. So I'm glad to answer any questions. I do this for living, for not a lot of, so. There are no dumb questions, because this is really weird stuff. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have. You're about to sort of process it, so.
So I guess where does where does the thirty three thousand come from then?
Okay, so the CRA and city have already laid out thirty three thousand dollars or more. What happens is they will uh sell the ground to the corporation for thirty three thousand dollars. And uh the CRA will uh sign a promissory note and give it to the corporation. And the corporation will give it back to the CRA, so the corporation's out nothing. The payments for the note then come from the increase in real estate taxes. So the new buyer will go in, their taxes won't be any higher than normal, they'll just be normal. And what will happen is uh the county treasurer will say, well, this is the tax on the beginning value, we're keeping that. And the tax on the increase in value, I'm gonna keep one percent of that, and then we're gonna give the ninety nine percent of that back to pay off that promissory note that's floating out there. Um and it's principal and interest. And uh nobody makes up the shortfall, it's not a pledge of uh any, it doesn't raise anybody else's taxes. Everybody hears you, new boss in town, new family in town, um hopefully you can get some recon back to the town. Which is exactly what the TIF statutes were set up to do, is to take stuff like this and see if you, if little incentive, you can get somebody else in those. The corporation, I mean, they do know it's gonna make jobs in the community in terms of. So it's it's really convoluted, if you've got an hour and a half, I can diagram it for you. But it's basically a way to get money back and get a new house in town.
Okay.
And and your issue is essentially, is this is this fit with the comprehensive plan? And since it fits with the zoning, I'm sure it should fit with the comprehensive plan.
So basically, this is a TIF note, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then that would be in the city's budget if this is passed, right? Okay. Okay.
Excellent question. Anything else? I'd, and and your action would be a little bit later is to pass the resolution that's in your uh packet. And that makes, if you pass that, that's a recommendation to the redevelopment authority and the city, so yeah, let's go ahead.
So I think you just open it to the public for public comment.
Okay. And at this time, we'll open up to public comment.
How long is the TIF loan for?
Not to exceed fifteen years. And if the taxes go up a lot and it gets paid off earlier, then the notes canceled and the taxes are back on the, go to the normal taxing entities, so. Good question.
Any other comment?
Maybe I don't have a comment, but I can talk about the last projects that we did, which is comparable to this one.
Okay.
Um so our last one, um we did, we built a home and we we tipped that project. So we took a lot that was valued at roughly, excuse me, about, I don't remember if it was forty five hundred or six thousand. And we built a home on there and it, that home appraised at about two hundred and forty nine thousand. Um it relocated a family to Perkins County, a young family um with a child, and they opened a downtown business. And so um that was a great, great investment with the TIF note. Um and then we also built one over on Garfield. That one was not tipped, but that was the same thing, it relocated a new family to Grant. They are now both employed at our um Perkins County High School, and they have a young child with another one on the way. So um they're bringing in families, and that was a twelve thousand dollar lot, I believe. And that house appraised at about two hundred and about two hundred and forty nine, two hundred and fifty. And those um those homes sold for, one sold for a hundred and ninety five, the second one sold for two hundred and twelve thousand. We're currently working on another project in another community, um same concept, it's just a stick build home. And um it is a young family, it's not even completed, but it's been um it's under contract, it's a young family, and that home appraised at two thirty. So it's not only bringing in families and taking, making revenue off those lots that are making, nothing, taking a six thousand lot and put a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar lot on it, the revenue, besides bringing people into the community. Um it's also making our uh appraisals, because we had no comparisons for somebody to build a home and sell it. Uh most homes that are being built are built by families who are hiring somebody and they're building the homes for themselves. So it is really building some of our appraisals um and some comparables in the area. So that seemed like a very perfect lot to um maybe redevelop and put another home in there and hopefully bring another family. It's a little bit different home, it's gonna be stick built, it's only two bedroom, two bath, but it will be on a full basement, about thirteen hundred and sixty five square foot. Um and an oversized um garage, so.
Okay.
So the recording of this, because I wanna take a piece of every channel.
Just checking.
Okay.
So the value you got on houses, you got to, from looking at houses around, are you telling what the price would be?
So. When we built those homes, there weren't really any new homes comparable for those, so we now have two homes, so yes, uh we now have two homes to compare this home to.
Okay.
I imagine, you know, the um selling price is gonna be around two thirty to two fifty. So hopefully we just.
So is the first TIF note paid yet or not? So this will be yet an additional TIF, Roger.
Each project has its own TIF note. Taxes don't, if it's built in twenty six, it doesn't pay taxes until, or two, in twenty five, it won't pay taxes until twenty seven. Because it goes taxable one one of twenty six. Bill comes out December of twenty six payable in twenty seven, so that'll be a way, the city's gonna be, and the CRA is gonna be waiting until we get their money back, but.
Yep.
Randy, is the reason the lot is different, because they had to, the city had to pay to to purchase the home and then tear it down and do all that, that's the extra expense in it? Okay.
Well, thank you for that, that's, appreciate the information.
You can ask if there's any more comments or otherwise close of that five eighteen.
Uh any more comments or questions? Alright, we're gonna move to close that at five eighteen P M.
Now you'll go to your resolution.
Resolution.
Yeah. And then just read uh uh other than new business, maybe on your agenda.
Just starting at the right there.
Just read your D on your agenda.
Okay. Alright, and then uh action and discussion on resolution number twenty five zero two dash zero one. Resolution recommending approval of the city of Grant redev- redevelopment plan for the two forty five Lincoln Avenue redevelopment project of the city of Grant, Nebraska, and approval of related actions.
And you guys can take a motion.
I'll move. Whatever you want. I I I'll move for for it. So.
So uh so you're moving and approving the resolution number and then two oh twenty five oh two oh one, resolution recommending the approval of the redevelopment plan for two forty five Lincoln Avenue. And then you're gonna second it?
I am going second for approval.
And then you'll do a roll call vote to begin.
Okay, and then we'll do roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Sorry, I could've run it.
Alright, and then I'll have you to sign the documents before we leave then.
Okay.
And then you're ready to move to adjournment.
Alright, and now we're gonna move towards adjournment, and that is going to be at five twenty P M.
Motion for adjourn, is that okay?
Five hundred seventeen.
Thanks.
It's peanuts, every time.
I am sorry.
Recording stopped.
Not really. He just told me I should. I really should, it's one research. I guess the.
Did you do most of the work for?
No, we do, almost, almost a junk thought. We went and cleaned it up a little bit.
Anyone need to.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'll be there for the next two.
Alright, let's see her. I'm glad that she can share that with us. She wants to be, catch whatever corona or virus it's going to. Appreciate you being here.
I haven't heard first of all, how it was, one of the donation classes, but I haven't worn out yet.
I think he was diagnosed as COVID.
Thank you, Randy, I appreciate you.
No, I've got.
So why do you go?
I actually did first.
You have five. You'll you'll have. That's alright, everyone's gotta have some.
They don't do this.
Oh, 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 only.
Um yeah.
Don't want to hear that for your permission.
Sure.
I think he's going up. They felt a bit, they.
As far as I know, I hope not. Guess I better drive up there.
I just heard, I'm not sure. Or I'm not.
I'll have to go see.
I thought it was. Somebody did. I don't know.
It was a concern for us. Water on that east side, the way that east side lays is not real good.
We clear that way, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what to stop that because right now.
Good job, Randy.
Thank you, I'm still learning.
Jay, you know, the commission meetings, I'm always nervous. My state commission meetings. I'm always nervous right when I'm on the chair, and I'm like, I have to type everything in red.
Yep, we can't start. That's a night call of meetings.
So David took the agenda, and so the lady at D, she typed in red everything I need to say. It's so.
I don't think we've got Jesse anymore.
Thank you so much, Kim, for doing that, because otherwise I'd be sitting at the like uh uh public meeting, you know, just sit where, someone on the table.
I get it.
Yeah.
I've been doing it for a couple of years, but it's so beautiful. But the motion means after I.
And how you say.
Exactly. I didn't just Jesse's here.
You'll get it.
Hopefully, eventually.
A little more practice.
Alright, we'll see you later.
Thank you.
You can, you, you did Mr. Bacon's.
Oh. We get another microphone up there. The problem is if that's what I was calling it, people were running microphones on my trips, then. I know, so that's why there's a microphone up there, because there's.
Okay, so who I can't get out to.
What?
I really, so I slipped on the side, because then you can hear me. So a lot of times if somebody is talking to me, which he's on the left, though, if somebody's on the right side talking, I will always be like looking at him and kind of reading my lips. But my brother in law called today, him and his dad, um his um sister went away to dinner, and I was like, you have somebody on my wife? He's like, what are you talking about? They're all named after the parents, but it's kind of anything. So I hold the gun, he's like. I'll be like talking, and I can't hear it, he's like, Amy, do you hear me? No, I don't know.
You know this. My aunt has lost all of her little one ear too, she fell. And that's what caused it at one time, so.
Mine is um just terrible ear infections and the rupturing, I just lost the hearing and.
Mine's from old age.
It was just like.
But I I I went to my auntie, and he goes, well, it's not bad enough yet. Because your insurance won't pay for it, you know, it's.
That's the thing, is I gotta get that figured out.
And it's like, it's like, like I have a cataract in the side, and the doctor was like, oh, it's not bad enough yet. Just close your left eye, and I'm like, when I'm driving, you know, and you're able to see better. I'm like, okay, sounds like a plan. And that's exactly what I said to her, I was like, I'm like, are you serious? And she's like, well, or you can just pay for the whole thing out of pocket, and I'm like, well, okay, I'm worth that, because I heard it's, you know, I don't know, thirty twenty thousand.
Yeah, it's pretty big. Alright, so the next one's CRA meeting, and then do you, we need to be at the city council meeting? Yes.
I would say for that hearing, probably, if you want to. Yeah.
Yep.
I made coffee, I I am, I made it real strong, so.
We're gonna need it today, yeah.
Oh, wow, yeah, it could be a long meeting, will it be a long meeting?
Probably. You don't have to stay here. Yeah, just prepare.
I know, I didn't know when I sneak out, then I feel so free.
We don't feel that way. We don't, she told us, they're just jealous. How dare you sneak out?
Well, I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, I'm sure. During budget season, we're gonna get those on either long, like do one. During budget season, we're gonna get those on even long, like do one window every year or kinda like we do at the streets, kinda.
Gotcha.
Budget it out. Cause even the, sometimes even the drinks. That's how bad it is.
Tell me, tell me.
We should have been here when. It was quite, it was quite the distraction. Yeah, so then we had to pound off and set traps up there. And that was even worse, because we were afraid everything would be run in. But no, it never felt, dropped in on us, but it was. Right, cause the garage is open. I mean, it has to be, we're working on it, but they can't, they've shut. If there was ventilation, there's no ventilation. Or if they're welding, they can't, they have to open it. I know, years ago, they didn't.
We appreciate.
We're not, we're not.
I don't know. Sure, but yeah, you can't hear me. We do need a microphone up there, but that isn't our concern. That might be us. Right. Cause the look of the like. Up here.
I know, and he tells me this is his last round there, so. He's gonna get that.
Right around the.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I'm sure. It's a breath of fresh air for him, I'm sure.
I can follow only cause. I'm familiar with what he's talking about.
Wow, it's scary.
Yeah, I'm sure. You will? It does. It's quite distracting. It's worse than the, um, the vent.
How's Cisco? Find out.
Broke the vents. Those should be. Displaced right there. Yep. Really near. Stressing my.
Well, let me show you some things that should be stressing.
Okay.
Let me show you pictures. I do. I'm gonna show you miniature pile or I'm really good at it. Use a pile.
Is he?
So how old is he? One year.
He's a year.
He's a year old.
He just turned a year. I'll probably mix them up.
And he, he's a little turkey. Yes, but he loves his granny.
True.
Oh, that's the fun of it. Oh.
He does look great.
He does, yeah. I mean, he's just a pill. Um, my favorite art person now is the kid.
Those two important people. So he's walking, so maybe he can really be naughty.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes, that's what they're.
He's very naughty. So this is how he fell asleep, riding in his.
So he does room, so he does sleep at least.
I loved this picture. I was like, look what he did. And I was like, that is so cute and so normal.
It's so cute.
It doesn't sound the best normal. I was like, oh yeah, awesome. Or child, you said it's a child. I love it. We just want kids to be.
Yeah, and I'm gonna have to go back to the office.
No.
Oh. So maybe. On the other hand. They're maybe just.
We can fill that cool air over here.
So I got a boy or a girl.
A boy.
Cousins, cousins.
And they're like seven months apart.
Oh, they have so much fun then. They have so much fun together.
So cute.
Boy, he looks like his daddy too.
Yeah, so. He is. This is probably should have at my house every day when I'm so old.
Yeah.
I love him, I mean.
Do much fun.
It really is. And he's just. We had first time in mom, she's been around really six.
You got the bug that's going around everywhere.
She had a whole evaluation.
Can you put your own pee in there?
Uh-oh.
So, and she has been sick since. We got it, it was okay. She's taking it out of the hospital.
I'm just scared.
For a little vacation, now I'm out there, they have to take her hospital. Treat for her, I mean, it's nasty. She's done better now. I think I'm gonna reschedule her operation. She needed to get some sort of.
Oh, so they weren't even able to do it?
They did it. Oh, and they don't know. Cause lung issues, I really don't understand it, but I totally.
You know, one coin, they had to go to windows, then they had to go to windows, and now they're just.
So where did she go? The evaluation?
Threats.
And cards.
To card.
But they, they said it's.
So that was one of their construction projects this year.
Yeah, it can take a lot of attention. We're not, we first moved into our house. Our front door, and you can just build away from it. And they had, um, the door, the door. And we went to unscrew it and actually ripped it off, it was a hole, it was an inside door.
See, our doors just opened. And when we bought the house, we bought a new door that's still sitting there around. It's got some glass in it.
That's a pretty.
Yeah.
That's not easy.
But. Maybe we just need to take the time and put it in, we do, we can do it ourselves, but. Last year, we got a new person in, and I asked a person, we got a person, a jury. Called a quick one person, would you put the door in? Here's the person that I would contract. He wanted. He put a door in.
I saw Randy power door. He thought it would be easy and easy. It took him two days because our, it's not old. Our house is not loving, and the doorway is not.
And you should have just called your family. Put a minute entry, lock your door. I had told her it was gonna be easy. Put it in, shim it. It wouldn't shift right after we tried something highly complicated. And it's like.
He's not like his father, actually.
Stiffed out. Did something and it fit. He just looked at it. He can, yes, he can just see things like that. That's how Randy gets computers.
Oh, which one might we say?
Remember that.
Yeah, that's for sure.
I made Randy look at computers.
And Miles, so Miles chose to go to the National. So Miles has to go to Spain.
Oh, really?
And he gets to go on Monday's trip.
So if you're having a little working.
No, Lauren stays with us. Deanna will go. Deanna goes, you know, couples, there's a couple of couples who take them, you know, once a year. That's when they rotate. Yeah, they rotate and they take the trip. And this year was him and Jason. Oh. To Atlanta.
Let's go on.
He said, there's really not a lot in Atlanta. And I was asking Miles, I said, what are you gonna do?
I kind of doubt it, but.
Call it football, I'm famous there, so. And then he also gets to go to.
Go with this one?
And NBA, I think he used to go to NBA.
Okay, so you want to just go with that one? As long as it's not refurbished? Like you said, even if it's refurbished. Okay, as long as we're aware of it.
The conference itself, you know, direct people, you know, that's a lot of what they do, but then they also have leadership.
And I'll have him send.
Passes and stuff, so he's pretty excited about it. That's a fun.
Yeah, so.
And then they have events, so they're playing at Omaha, they say, but they go out on the seven and come back on the twelve. And.
He knows a lot about computers, but he also goes on the consumer. And then there's another site that I also.
Well, they usually go.
We're on a bet. So Jesse's like, I don't know about computers. I'm like, I don't know either, but I know somebody. I think, I think good. Sure, yesterday. So stunning. I don't either. So they went in and they fixed. Do you know where it is or something? And then they put in like a pacemaker that'll make her. Took, cause the nerves quit, the nerves quit moving, so the pacemaker. Replayed, right. So. It's what the, you know, the, the, whatever the. So she had two surgeons.
Well.
Two surgeons. And she had a technician in there to calibrate. Uh, the pacemaker. So they can use that. So and then she came out of surgery. So generally, it was low and heavy, the trauma. So they kept her in. So first then I was getting. I wish it's. Really? Oh, they're referring to.
Friday, Saturday.
And then the surgery.
And so I started on the, um, the late family on Monday.
No, cause she has that history.
On, which Thursday, so. Anyway, Brett and I.
Last, maybe she was.
They go to that. And then on Saturday, one of the.
But it's like. Everything in general.
Yeah, so.
Thirty-five, thirty-one. I mean, I, I polish.
Oh, no, I'll play.
And my mom.
They all.
It does, yeah. Cause it was like earlier this morning.
Not except for my age, that's just. How the black they smell, which is, they are what they are. Same, I don't seem like Peter, I just have a voice.
Now they're bad with their big curves.
Yeah. That's like, I get it. God. Yes.
That's, and that's what my ocean.
And I just.
You know, for sure.
Gary has got, uh, where's the air? Miles, right now, he's two. My kid, why did you call? From Gary, I think he's from Gary. Was it, oh, it's rounds and the kid, Scott's plus, who was second, was in another round, so, you know, and so Miles didn't. He was. But that was. You know, you never wanna be put in a row. From Gary, who's probably gonna win state when it happens, you know?
It's just a lot of.
Yeah, it is. And I always tell, I always said, totally is. It's just. It's funny.
Do you see that? Oh, that's good.
So he'll have a lot of.
Yeah, question. Oh, I'm not. Shift this. We're not ready for this.
Just. I know sometimes you're like, especially. And, 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 and.
Maybe work all the harder. You know, a lot of it is making up your mind.
So she, um, I told my dad, they have this carpet line to the store.
I'd have to tell you. I, I don't know my coaching, cause I never did it. So I.
That kid, I took it to the.
I do it.
And, and. Cause she. She, she also. She was. One, he told you it was a problem, and two, and we never.
It's about there?
Stuff. And so then, um, the lady basically. So.
Down there at the hay market, so I was like, alright, Grant. And he's like, this is what we need to start under.
And so now, um, she still cannot lift anything more than, um. Forty-five pounds. She can't lift anything over her shoulders, more than like, you know, a glass, like.
About a hundred dollars.
Light dish, not a heavy bowl.
That's amazing.
Anything over her head, um, she's not supposed to. So, I mean, it's a.
I said, we'll run the, we'll buy groceries.
But she could, we wish it was, she just can't, she has to be careful with it. Tours.
Yes, you can always.
Oh, that's a great place to be.
I do, are you sure? Still. Right, and that's what she is. He was switching to.
Once he sends it in and he gives his recommendations.
I just thought of that. Oh, my gosh.
He gets it. If they're casting, what names can they have? It's too bad, because of the ones I've been watching. It's too bad, and they didn't put their names in, but.
You never know what happens.
Back east, they get.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And I feel like that was just a.
Yeah.
Funny how that works. Especially for women.
Yeah. Great.
But sometimes she'll shut down there when they play basketball.
Grace for months.
Six months. Yeah, that's how, um.
And it's still, yeah, some of these things don't work.
So she can't, she's not supposed to. Cause she, not when you lost track of her. The lady went, she was attempting, she went to move her to the front this morning, cause she can't lift those, cause she. So she should have.
As you were.
Then she had.
Yeah. That's a little bit. As, as do you.
It was so.
Yeah.
So they're gonna shoot actually. But like. Yeah.
I did care my.
Now. Cause I was like, do you go back out? Yeah, I cool, not very well, but I.
Small to progress.
Management.
I think they're having a good time. First one. Yeah, cause I usually go to the.
I know.
I like Julie and Kim, and she's like the lady that works, they're so, and they're so patient with me, because.